All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Kingston zoning board appeals meeting for Thursday, September eleventh. My name is at the Tappan, I'll be chairing this meeting. I'll call the roles, starting to make right. Eugene Foley.
Harrison DeBrales.
Casey does zoning and birthmark service here.
Paul Alves.
Carl Hector.
Being that it is the eleventh of September, I feel like we should take a moment to recognize what happened twenty-four years ago. Some people that I know were lost in the towers and. I don't know, I have some feelings about it, but. You know, just wanna recognize that that. And moving on, I'll have a call this meeting to order. So our first agenda item is approving the minutes from our July tenth meeting. Everybody had a moment to take a look at those.
The only question I asked is, I, I also don't remember who seconded that thing at the end.
Like you had something on your.
You know what, I probably happened in my notebook, I didn't know what I was saying, it was actually just wanting to give these friends. And a bit. It's sad. I have this in my bag.
I mean, if no one's blaming it, it was probably him, but.
I mean, we can double check the.
Yeah, I was watching on YouTube repeatedly.
You couldn't see.
Couldn't see who said second.
Well, you know what, well. If I can't find my though, well, we'll, we'll go with that. And if I can find it. It's usually I write everything on the agenda and I don't have it up. I don't know where the agenda is from last, oh, wait, here it is. Nope, that's just a copy. It happens and there's so many kinds. All right, so let's just go with that and with what you're not kidding her. And if there's a change, then I'll email you and you can. All right, all motions to approve the minutes.
I'll maybe watch it on.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
And I will stop at that.
Got it. No, right, um, I have no, well, I mean, I guess. Uh, yeah, I guess it's new business. Yeah. Um, so we got a letter from the attorney representing. Uh, DAR house, which is one oh six one twenty-two Green Street, asking to reschedule. So we. We'll agree to that with consent of course, we'll move that forward to the next. I suggest that we do it at the next, at our next regular meeting. Uh, so that we don't keep getting this thing down the road further. I know the people at H L P C were notified that it wasn't going to happen tonight, so. Um, if we do that, then everybody can be prepared for our next meeting. We can notify them that that's gonna happen. Um, is everyone in agreement on that? Or anybody have any thoughts?
Let me confirm that the attorney can attend. Maybe some dates that is available.
Well. I mean, they, they, they had. Right, they got, they got notified after our July meeting, so they had two months to prepare for this date and then monitor reschedule it. Um, you know, I don't. We, we don't have a requirement to. Meet their schedule, right? I mean, we have a statutory requirement to, um, to have a hearing. So, um. You know, uh, I, I mean, it's, I guess it's if, if we're in agreement, we can push it out to meetings, um, I, you know, but I, 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 I feel like we need to just take care of this. I don't wanna drag it on forever. Um, and, and I really have no interest in having a special meeting about this. Um, it should be on one of our regular scheduled dates. So, uh.
Is there anything on the agenda for our next month's meeting yet?
What is that?
So the deadline.
One thing.
Yeah, so that should be October ninth would be our next regular meeting. That or November thirteenth, which, I mean, that's pushing is another two months. So, I mean. See, now I'm, I'm inclined to try to do it next month, uh, but, um, if, if they, they notified us that they weren't of available, I mean, you know, we could be wildly accommodating by pushing it out.
Are they definitely not available next month?
Sorry?
Are they definitely?
Oh, I don't know about the D A R personnel, you know, the board, but, um. The attorney has said that he is out of the country from nine ten to nine twenty-two and again from ten eight to ten seventeen.
Ten eight to what?
To seven, ten seventeen.
Yeah, so that's right, that's right over there. I mean, if we, if we, yeah, I mean, if, if we agree to do, to do it and put it on the meeting for. November, but so that's, well. It's, what, sixty-three days? Sixty-two days. All right, come on, we gotta count these days now.
As long as it's mutually agreed upon.
No, it starts.
Clock starts today, right?
Well, the thing, yeah, technically he's asking it to be rescheduled, but he can always make the argument that we could have scheduled it sooner and we. Picked it. Past the.
There, all right, so. So it starts today, the. Think so.
Well, it would be a reasonable amount of time, like we could, like you guys, again, can't, if you guys said, well, we're gonna just adjourn it out six months. Obviously, he can make a motion like. But that basically was not decided within the period of time required. And also, I would be cautious. Um, the one thing is you can always schedule for next month and then then request it to be rescheduled again. Or scheduled again for the following month. Um, or, or whatever you guys decide at that time.
Well, yeah, I mean, if we're gonna fold it, then we're gonna give appropriate people notice on it. Uh, I'm, I'm sure that there's people from H L P C that wanna have some input and I don't, um. Anyone to string around the line either, so. So, um.
I did wanna. Leave you guys rather than having like a special meeting, just reschedule next month's meeting to a different day.
Oh. Oh, I would be open to that if that's a thing, but we'd have to check with, um.
As long as you get.
Conference. Available, right, you know, um, and what about, we have the, uh, the regular. Um, our regular meetings are already published, so.
So they're gonna be republished, that the regular meeting for October has been rescheduled to this date as long as it's.
Maybe we just have this, like the standard published, but like.
And make sure that everything else is updated.
Probably they're pushing that.
Yeah, yeah, I feel like there's, there's a chance of there being an error there that I don't wanna stumline. All right, so let's, so, uh, how many days between today and?
Does today count? Is today day one or?
If we're back, so if we're, if we're only, if we're only off by one day, then I don't wanna take that risk.
Sixty-three by lockdown.
Uh, all right, but.
Well, what I would say is if you could put it up for November, um. They did say that, uh, we are going to have the clerk contact the attorney and have him submit in writing that he's not available on the October date. Um, and he's requesting that be put for the November date and otherwise it's gonna be scheduled on record. So that way, you know, we have something again keeping up. As opposed to him saying a bit of that, that, you know, he's not, you know. Picked it out.
Yeah. So you want to, you want a second confirmation because he already did an email.
Yeah, but he, he emails and says he wasn't available today.
And, and also his next day is October.
But again. Does he specifically say he's requesting if he adjourns the October?
Wait, that's why you're the attorney.
I know how attorneys are. Well, they could have scheduled it any other time within those sixty-five days instead they chose to.
Yeah, so then we schedule for next.
So basically, you said that, uh, we are going to have the clerk, uh, contact the attorney, um, and. If he needs it, like we're scheduling it, uh, penciling it, scheduling it for October and the clerk will contact the attorney and if he needs it, if he will make an adjournment request and we will then. If he sends it.
Okay, so what am I, what am I going to contact him and ask him that he needs to reschedule?
Yes, if he, if he does not, if he wants it to be on the November meeting, he will need to send in a request. That he is adjourned, that he is requesting that the matter be adjourned to the November meeting.
Because we're saying it's gonna be October unless he says it.
But you can say on the record now that if he does make that request, he will put it on.
Yeah, so, um. Uh, can we, uh, uh. Give for authorization to the clerk to, um, to, uh, for. Look like power mutual consideration to reschedule this meeting in the event that they.
Yeah, can be a night that they receive a, a request specifically stating that they're waiting the time and requesting that the matter be. Adjourned to the November.
Yeah, so our, so our preference is to hear this on October the. Ninth. On our regular scheduled meeting, um, if. If the, if the applicant. Wants to reschedule that, we agree that we will push it to our November thirteenth meeting. But no later.
Agreed.
Should we actually make, should we make a motion for that? That's, that's fine, because it's not a official action, right?
Yeah, it's basically scheduled. You can just, you have to say that if you're making a motion for that, you second that favor.
Okay, you do, so we shouldn't.
You don't have to, but you might.
It's, all right, well, uh, uh. So that you're. To that effect, um, of having the, stick with the meeting as we just discussed. Um, do I have a? A motion to make that happen?
I make a motion to have the administrative clerk. Pull it up to October meeting, if not November, regardless.
Yeah. Uh, second?
Second.
Right, on favor. Um, all right, okay, so on to, um, new business, thirty-eight McKinney Street. Um, we will start by having the applicant come here. Tell us a little bit about what you want to do. Um, and then we will, um. Open the floor to the public here. You guys, they there, um. You start by just stating your name and then, uh. Explain to us, uh, why you're here.
Hello, thanks for having me. My name is Simone Consor and my mother's here with me. And, um, I would like to, uh, get a variance to fill a small A D U for my mom. That is it.
Yeah, um, so. You. I, you went through the application, did you go, did you? You read the box? Application for the new experience to a C B A. And you, you understand like kind of what you need to do in order.
I need to get, well, from what I understand, I'll need to get, um. An engineer, right? Or is this?
Well, this for us to be able to, so there's, there's some criteria that you need to meet in order that, that we have to review and then you need to, um, meet the burden of in order for us to be able to grant a use variance.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, you know, and part of the challenge of the use variance is that it's a pretty high bar to, to me. Um, you, uh, you have to meet certain criteria, um. And the most substantial and difficult of that criteria to me is that the applicant cannot realize a reasonable return. Earn substantial demonstrated by competent financial evidence. Um.
Can you dumb that down?
So you have to prove to us that there is no other use that you could use this property for, that you could. Get a reasonable return on your investment. Um, and, uh. Based on the laws of the state of New York, and that is a, that is a monetary return, um, it is not a life value return.
Well, monetary, I do support my mother, so that is a hardship if I can't do it.
Um, so what you would need to do, um, and, 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 you know, I see some of that information here, right? Um, but what we would need to, to see is that there's no other way that you could use this property. Um, that would give you a return that's allowed under in our current code, right? That could give you a return, um, that would be reasonable, right? So we, we need to see like financial proof that shows that. How other ways that you might be able to use the property, um, and, and, um. And you have to show proof to us that none of those things are reasonable and that this is the only way that you can get a, forget a, a return.
I see, um.
It's a very, um, narrow and challenging thing to me. Um.
I think it could be done. I mean, there's really no other thing I could do for the property to financially support myself, put my mom in any kind of facility that would. Work, like, I don't know if you guys have aging parents that you're putting in places. I just don't have the means to put her through that, so the only way I can make this work. Is if I have her there so I can get, I can hire a caregiver.
Yeah.
Or pay for, you know, a facility. So this is really it. And I, I understand, I had to apply for, uh, with the planning board for a neighborhood business.
Yeah.
It's kind of. To me, it's a very gray area because while yes, I'm officially a neighborhood business because I'm a hair salon, I'm not really a hair salon, I'm an individual hairstylist. And I do buy appointment only out of my home.
Yeah.
So it was like frustrating because I couldn't classify this home occupation, so in order to do hair, which mind you, that place was a hair salon well before my. You know, ownership, and they also had a structure in the back that they have since torn down, not the shed, that's there now, but when the old family actually let them live there. Um, they had a salon for fifty years and it was, and a dwelling in the back. Whether that was up to code or not, there was something there.
I mean, that is, that is a real bummer, that got torn down because if it was still there, you could have used it, even if it was in really bad shape.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I, I feel like, I don't know, I'm not asking to like pop up a hotel and.
No, I understand.
Is there a way you guys?
You know, and, uh, and I think in, in general, um. You know, this is, we are only a few years into this code, um, and, you know, there's been a big focus on, on housing, uh, you know, it's kind of one of the, one of the reasons why in. General affordability of the space that we live here in the city and that's, that was kind of the impetus of, of, um, of redesigning this, uh. And, um. One of the. You know, there, there, there is, um. You know, I think, I, I think that this is maybe a thing that. The, the common council might wanna rethink, um, about how this works, but, um. As far as the use variance, like we, you know, well, we'll, we'll discuss in, in a little bit about, um, uh, cases of termination, um, and, and, and that, but, um. You know, uh. The, the burdens unfortunately are what is regulated in state law, right? So, so it is, um, it, you know, we, we would need to see, um. That you can't get a return, right? Um, and, and. I don't know, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm unaware of, um, whether or not. Uh, saving money is considered a return, right?
Well, it's not really saving money. Well, this situation, it's.
Yeah, there's definitely a high threshold, I'm just a little. Kind of. You know, not necessarily, I don't. Have enough information to really see whether this is in fact prohibited because under.
Well, that.
Class is residential with commercial.
We'll, we'll, we'll discuss that, yeah.
This is the, there, there's not a single property in Kingston that is like mine, and if there is one, I'd like to see it, this is the most, it's a, it's. It's zoned in the old zoning, it's two eight, two eighty-three with incidental commercial use, so. It, it's, it's unfortunate that, you know, there's two different divisions here, you've got the zoning board and appeals, and you have the planning board, so in order for me to do a home occupation that falls under. General commercial, like, it's like. To do one thing, I have to do this to another thing, so I, you know, I pay however many hundreds for this, three fifty for this, and it's. It, I'm not like, I don't have employees, this is like, I'm very slow operating, I, I live there.
Yeah.
And, and frankly, there's narrow stairs, she's already fallen, if you can see, this is not even, she runs the hostel, her arm, she can't do the stairs, so. It's not safe for her to be in the house as this, and there's no room. So we need to do this because there's no other option.
Yeah.
The, uh, the front of the building is a storefront, right? Is that?
It's, it can be designed as a storefront.
Was it, was it originally like a, like not long ago, a coffee shop or?
It was a cafe, and before that it was a hair salon, like owner occupied, and both, every occasion, the former hair salon, the cafe and myself have all been owner occupied.
All been under what?
Owner occupied, owner occupied, owner operated, so it's not like, like again, I, I'm not, I don't have employees, I know this is a bit unique and I feel like our architecture is quite unique here. So I mean, I, I know, if this was like, you know, Sonder, one of these places have two apartments on top and like a backyard, I could totally see why you guys would be like, sorry, New York state code, but this is like so different, so I'm hoping you guys can like. Hear the hardship in.
Your, your hair salon or your, your hair work?
Well, no.
Will be done in the front storefront with.
But sorry, yeah, that's where it's being done.
Was it, uh, the coffee shop when you owned it or it was a?
No, it was, I purchased it from him and Jeff, who's done it, yeah.
I'm personally confused as to why it isn't prohibited.
Me too.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll tell you, there's no way to get backyard or, um, is, is that, it's on the side. But do you have a copy of their, their way from the church parking lot or?
The, the church has allowed former owners.
Yeah, but legally, you have right away.
I'm not sure, I'd have to talk to the attorney that helped me with the closing, but there is an entrance.
Well, yeah, I mean, for like emergency fire, I'm sure they would lose it, correct, but to have an H U, how would, how would, if they weren't going through your house? Would they trespass on the church parking lot or would they?
Well, there's a gate that's there now, and what I have right away or not, I, I.
That's what I'm saying.
I do have ownership with that church, and I understand what you're saying, but my mother-in-law is there right now, I know the pastor and I know.
In A D U.
So I mean, I can ask them.
In a detached house. Um, or, there's like one more, um, sorry, or a courtyard, I think, um, and everything else can't. Put in a. And that's where the problem.
Where is that? Because I also can't find that.
Yeah. You know, we. Well, no, no, no. So let's, let's discuss that in a moment, but, but, um, before we get to that, let's see if we have any other questions for the applicant, um, and, and, um. Uh, does, does anybody have questions for applicant?
I have a question, I don't know.
Go ahead.
So from what I was, as I looked through, it seemed like a carriage house is allowed on this, on this type of property. So how, what are we classifying the difference? Because I, you know, as I'm looking through, I couldn't find it, the difference between A D U versus carriage house.
Oh, that's.
Carriage house has like a garage apartment space in it, and A D U is just an accessory dwelling unit.
Well, it's not just type of A.
It's a type of A.
Yeah. Yeah. So. Yeah, um, the, that, that's because of the, so the neighborhood, the, the building type is neighborhood business because of your application to run. The business out of there that went in front of the planning board, and that's what the planning board designated that building type as, right?
Yeah, even though like it's a substantially smaller portion to the residential, which is.
Well, that, I, that's how, that is exactly what a neighborhood business building type is, right? And then there are, there are lots of them in the city of Kingston and, and, and. Like specifically for that, or it's a place that's like a house that like also has a business in it, you know, that is, um, it's not like an office, it's, it's a place where people would go to like, you know, we have storefront apartments, something like that, which is exactly. Uh, uh, our appointments, um, it's exactly the kind of thing that you're doing, right, which is, which is great, and we should have more of that throughout the whole city.
I moved my whole business from Rhineberg, just so everyone knows, to be in Kingston, because I was really excited about the form-based code and I like took a huge leap. To do all of this and have like really invested in Kingston and been like. Doubting out about Kingston, I had no idea, this was in my plan all along, because you know, my mom's health has been declining to move her, I just, if I had known that this was gonna be like just challenging, I guess I was reading the code. It's wrong and it's a little disappointing.
Well, there have been some changes and there are some bits in here that are a little, that are a little difficult, um. And it, and you know, may, and, and there have been some growing pains and, and we're, and we, we're seeing that more and more often, um. Uh, you know, as these types of things go through, um, and, um. And there, there may be ways around this in the longer term, but it might take a little while, um. Um.
If I can't do an A D U, what can I do? I would imagine with such a, a parcel of this size and contingent on speaking to the church or finding out there's a right of way, there must be. Something I can do. In the, and it's a huge backyard, it's double.
Well, if you, um, uh. I mean, there's already residential in the building, right, so you could, uh. I mean, you may be able to just expand the building and make it attached and build, um, I, right, I mean.
Well, the other caveat to this is I am applying for the rough code plus one, so my mom has been on their list to get housing, which has been not suitable for almost three years now. So, you know, I'm hoping like, in order for them to even consider the grant for me, I would have to get approval for an A D U, which. I guess I'm just wondering, like, they, I know the neighborhood business, it just seems like, could I apply for a different type of business then? I'm like, I'm.
Do you qualify as like a home occupation that is your primary?
That's what I thought I would have to do when I first bought the property, but then I had to go, I had to wait two months to even like start renovations because I had to make sure that I could do my line of work. In the house, so they had me classified as a neighborhood business. But I'm, like again, I don't have employees, I have no intention of having employees, it's just me doing hair. Buy appointment only with my clients, I have a sign, I'm having to take it down, I don't even need it. You know, if it's.
I mean, one, I mean, one way forward that I could think of in the shorter term, um, w- would be to convince the planning board to reclassify the building type. Right, um, and that, right, that's the only, right, because if this was, if this was considered a detached house with a home business in it, then. It would be allowed.
Can I do that?
I've had it up to the planning board.
Yeah, yeah, you'd have to convince the planning board to do that, um, but that, that, that would be allowed under the code, um. Another option, um, longer term, and this is something that, you know, I think that we might wanna, uh. Look at a little bit closer, we could, they may make a recommendation to the council, um. To update the code to allow A D Us in a neighborhood building, um, business building type. Um, I mean, uh, uh, as I, this is something that hasn't really been on my radar, but as I was looking at this application, I was like, why, why are we not allowing this, right? Like, it feels like we probably should be allowing this as long as it meets all the setbacks and other, otherwise, we, you know, I think by the, what we wanna do. And the intention in the code was to allow things like that, this, um, so. Unfortunately, the position that we're in right now, the way the code is written right now, we don't have a really good path forward through this mechanism because of the financial burden. That we need to.
Again, for the financial burden.
The tough thing about the fina, financial burden is it's not about your situation, it's about, it's about what you're able to get from the land or the structure. So, I mean, I think as empathetic as we all are, it actually has nothing to do with personal finances or anything like that. It is exclusively about the usage of the land and proving, and that's why it's such a high barrier to me, uh, proving the inability to extract value from it, basically.
Is a purely capitalist, uh, point of view, I would say, unfortunately.
I hear, curiosity, without my mother's help financially, I cannot afford the place, that's a fact. So.
And, and like, even with my case, my financial problems or my financial problems.
Isn't that a financial, I guess I'm confused about.
So, so the whole thing is, is. So so the whole thing is, is you have to say that the prop, there's no other way that the property could be used. That would make you more money, right? It has nothing to do with your individual situation. It's what you could do with the property, right? Um uh you know, or that the property is so unique that. Um like, I mean, you know, the other, the other burden would be like. That this property is so, so unique, there's no other properties in Kingston that are like it. In in a way that that should allow you to do this thing that generally would be not allowed, right?
Feel like I could argue that.
But like that, that's, there's plenty of neighborhood built business building types in the city of Kingston. It's, you know, there's maybe not a lot on your block, but there's lots of them in the city, so.
A good example would be, say, you have a piece of lot of land and it's only forty feet wide and and the land, uh the the. Um code requires that you have fifteen foot setbacks on each side. It's like, well, then I can only build, you know, a ten foot. Wide structure, you know, let's get a area.
Well, I'm hoping, you know, somehow somebody somewhere could work to me, cause they're not rolling out the plus one grant anymore. This is it. This is the last year for it. It's no longer gonna be a thing.
Does that grant go for like a mother-daughter, like in addition to your house?
So they will allow attach, but there's a specific, I have the email where it, under the guidelines of the grant. They specifically define the term ADU. As long as some, I, it's it seems so broad to me, cause I've asked, you know, right now, it's a possibility before I. I spoke to Casey and they were going back to Borjo Sue. I was asking about a carriage house since I read the code and that seemed to be a possibility or an apartment, but I guess because, right, the neighborhood business. That's what I got. It it still won't allow it, so I can't do a carriage house. I can't, it's like I'm strapped because of this. This.
Well, so so as accessory buildings. Um an ADU is not allowed, but in the as. I mean, an attached. Uh let me go to the ADU section, because like, right, if if it's attached, it wouldn't be considered an accessory. You, it's not accessory structure, right? So it's uh. I don't know if it specifically says anything about. So I'm I'm reading the ADU section, which is um four oh five eighteen um B and.
I mean, even in our definition, it says attached or detached.
Yeah, so and under three, it says attached ADUs is subject to the regulation of primary structures and underlying transect. No, um so. Yeah, but then it says eight, the ADUs are only permitted within carriage house, detached house, duplex, rowhouse building. So I mean, in some ways, those two lines do contradict each other, right? Um because. It would say that um.
Well, what was the second one that you?
So so line three says attached ADUs, right? Um. Yeah, but where attached ADUs are um uh are. For primary structures in the underlying transit zone, so all, so all the regular setback requirements, that makes sense. It's like any addition to a, to a, to a building, right? Um so. Then in um detached, it says for accessory structures, that makes sense. But eight, line eight, ADUs are permitted within carriage house, detached house, duplex, rowhouse building types. That doesn't make any specification. I, my assumption, because there's ambiguity in that line, that it, that's referring to detached. ADUs, not attached ADUs. It doesn't specifically said.
Have you? Seen the property?
Uh I mean, I've been there before when it was the, when it was the um, the the um, the cafe. Um so, I mean.
If if, say, uh they, say you sell the property to, you know, you put it in the backyard. Um, you know, and you sell the property, the next people that own it, um the only way to get to the building in the back. Would be either through the primary structure or on somebody else's property. I mean, is there a way to do that? Like, if you don't have a. Right way?
Need to check the easement, how much of that property is mine to the left?
On the parking lot?
I mean, you took this, yeah, the survey, because I have a, I have a survey and. It has been clear to me I can even use the parking there. I've had no problems, like I, you know, I have a huge gate. I, but I've never, Rick has never once told me I can't use those spots. Actually, as a matter of fact, the old owner used to occupy five of them. Five of the spots and that's, you know, that was an agreement they had.
Yeah, but you don't need to drive to an ADU. ADUs don't have any.
How do you walk to it? If the building is built right to the full property line?
Is there, is there a way to walk past the building?
Not without the church parking lot.
Well, I, the question is how much of that land is on, is mine?
Right, well, so I mean, you would, you would have to know, you, that'd be part of your, your planning submit for um. Uh you know, to to planning and and everything, you have to get surveyed to, before you build things, you're gonna.
I have a survey.
Oh, you have, okay, yeah. So you know, so you know that you could, you own property enough to walk around the building.
I mean, you know. That gate has been there from, and it opens and closes our stairs there, whether or not. I mean, I can show you the survey now in my email if you wanted to look at it on your iPad, but um. Yeah, I mean, there is. I don't, I don't have an answer to that. I just know that I'm able to go through.
Right, right now, let's say the church goes out of business, somebody buys it and they put up a wall, can you get to your backyard without it? Their priority, that's my question.
There's, I mean, there's typically always a right of way, like, yeah, like you always have a. U- utility easement or, you know, if you have.
You said you have the gate.
Yeah.
The gate opens to the middle of the parking lot.
Opens to the middle of my.
Uh, I'm sorry.
It opens to my backyard.
From the middle of the park.
From the middle of the parking lot. Well, sorry, I.
I was thinking.
What if, uh this is in regards to your question, there was a. Hallway essentially through the building to the backyard. Like if someone rents, right? Not, not, you know, this is down the road, right? If someone rented it and there is an entrance through the house. Then that would.
My, my thought was an addition to the house.
This is my thought.
Yeah, so.
Make an addition to a house.
And and we're defined ADU as it can be attached, so I don't, I don't understand, like. You shouldn't be able to pursue whatever.
I mean, you know, Casey would have to give his official determination on a plan for that, but I feel like there might be a path there and.
If it's a.
If it's attached, right?
And did the planning.
Like say, no, that it couldn't be considered a home occupation, like you were using too much space or?
I mean, there's not, there were, it was sort of. I mean, it was actually quite pleasant, the meeting. It was really fast and they were like, great, good luck, and they never, we never really got into the weeds. There was never, I guess I never brought this up in order.
Yeah, and you wouldn't have, right? But it's like, I think there's room for them to reclassify it. I mean, it does.
Cause that, you know, if it was classified as residential or a home occupation, that wouldn't be an issue at all.
Yeah, and that, this is the thing, I think, a little bit about the building types, it's like, we define these building types. Really with the idea of giving people guidelines for new structures, really not necessarily what was there, right? I'm like, that was, that was the whole discussion when we were, cause we want people to build stuff that looks like it belongs here, not.
And I wouldn't do anything that's like a spaceship or something. I'm, I, it's gonna, you know, be aesthetically.
Oh, yeah, 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 I'm sure there will be, you know, uh huh, yeah, yeah. But like, that's the goal of like the architectural standards and the building types are in our. Oh, it's kinda, it's kinda for that, so um. Uh. I, well, I guess um. Is there anybody else here that wants to talk on this? Alright, I just wanna make sure I'm not ignoring other people. The. Yeah. I feel like there's, um, there is, uh, we're gonna, we'll, we'll be very hard pressed to um. Find a way to allow the use variance based on the criteria that we need to meet, or or or. I mean, in general agreements on that.
Yeah, um, I mean, a better, uh, 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 an easier application to hear would be if you go to the planning board. You request that they change the zoning and if they.
The building type.
Uh, oh, sorry, the building type, yep. And um, and then if they, if they deny that request, then I think there's maybe. Maybe more.
I mean, yeah, I guess you could make the argument that there's a hardship because of the unique building uh scenario, I guess, but I think.
I see more of an opportunity, at least with that than with, with, with what you have.
Yeah, cause if the building type is changed, I don't think you have to see this. I I agree with that. If they should, if 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 the planning board changes the building type to. Um uh into a detached house with a, with a, uh, you know, home, home occupation, then. This is allowed, alright? Um, the other option, um, you know, which. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm gonna make a recommendation, you know, myself to the county council that, that we would like to be look at. Allowing ADUs uh for this building type, cause I, I, I think. Otherwise, it meets the criterias that we want, um, so uh. That's gonna be, that would be a longer thing and that might happen. Um, there's no guarantees on that. That's a policy decision. Um, but.
Not this year.
Um, I mean, it could, it could happen, it could, you know, it could do it in, in a month or two if they really wanted to, but I mean. But, you know.
I don't want to waste your time that only, or I mean, for other people, yeah, but like for my sake, only because I don't think that there's, I don't have two months with the rub code. I submitted my application and it's essentially contingent on this.
Yeah, um.
I mean, all other.
So the other option. Well, you know, uh.
She can be able to put an addition on that property?
We can't define it as an ADU.
Far as an ADU, exactly. It's not allowed.
Yeah, I mean, they wanted to find it as an ADU and and the thing. See, what, what, what would end up happening is uh. You'd end up back here and we'd be interpreting the ambiguity in code. I got, I feel like that's, that's what would happen, because you know, three and eight, um. That line eight doesn't, in the context of the other lines there, I, I feel like there's, there's some space for interpretation.
That was my thought. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just looking for the path of. Of least resistance. I understand.
Path of least resistance, gonna go back to planning.
You would round for uh residential there too?
It's basically side by side with a very long backyard.
And and is the, the actual uh. Like salon more than one room? It was a.
No, it's one room and it's much smaller than the main house.
Yeah, I think maybe able to qualify for the, the home occupation, but yeah, that's something that uh. Speaking to the planning board and.
Are all the utilities combined between the house and the bill?
Yes, and I spoke to the water department and I'm allowed to use at the sewer, public works, um I can tap into the lateral.
No, I just meant for the existing, for the existing, what you have existing, it's all on one bill.
You don't get separate bills for the business.
Oh, I just.
There you go.
We have to go in front of the planning board.
I see, so I have to do another application, go forward.
Yeah, uh uh unfortunately, that would be what you'd have to do, yeah, um but if they did reclassify it, then. Then this issue goes away. Um you just talked to me the setback requirements and everything, um in that, that. Um for the, for the. Where it goes, you know, um and all the other requirements, but that this particular situation goes away, it's requalified.
Would I still be able to do, I would still be able to do my, my work though, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just how it's classified.
Yeah, but home occupations, there's certain limitations, like it's only fifteen percent or less of the, like, uh.
Total square footage.
Something like that, there's, there's a bunch of difference.
Well, that's, that's tough, cause it's, it's already a small building. Or you've been there, you said.
Yeah, I haven't been in the house, I don't know, but like.
It's small, like it's little, which is why there's a need for more space. There's not enough for all of us.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the space for the salon, if a part of it, uh you use for your home billing, you know, your home. You know, that's, that's, even though it's in the room with the whole salon, that's part of your homeowner's part, that where you do your monthly bill paying. You know, you can have a one room and say, well, this is the only section I use for, that's fifteen percent of the building. That's what I use for my business. I live in the rest of it.
Right, like.
Count, count the chair at the same, and where you store the product, everything else is a multi-use space where just because you use your computer to do billing. You also use it for other things.
I mean, right, you know, uh, I don't, I don't, I don't know that that is a true statement.
Now, like, let's say it's not possible based on this fifteen percent usage space, cause I'm not, it's, it, both spaces are small. The house is so small that I just don't know, it's thirteen eighty, the square.
You know, does the house have a second floor too?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we're talking about, yeah, the, yeah, the square.
It's about a third, I would say, realistically, like the size of the. Where I do hair is about, I think, it almost mirrors the square footage next door and then exactly on top, so it's a, it's a third. Exactly a third, cause it's thirteen sixty-five.
And then make it thirty-three percent.
Yeah.
That's right.
So I don't wanna, like, I just wanna, if they're not, if I don't meet the guidelines based on that fifteen percent for the home occupation.
Yeah. I mean, you have to look at that and see if there's a way that you could. I don't, I don't actually know what that, I have, I have to find that in the, in the, what that actual restriction is, but um.
Like, I don't know if they're.
Have you approached the building, the planning department?
We've, we've talked and she told me to come here.
Yeah.
They both took, Casey and Sue said I need to come here because of the. The use of it's like.
I wish we could just hand these things out. No, or just, they were, uh, you know, um. Uh, you, you, I mean, if you want, I guess, but I, we could give you a couple of o- options, right? Um, you could. Um, you could, we could table this, um, you could come back with some other. Try to come up with a financial argument, um, it, that. Uh, you know, you'd have to give us comparison with other possible uses of the property and, and. And try to come up with an argument that shows that you can't get a reasonable return in another way, um. And we can certainly look at that. Um, what you've got here doesn't give us that, um, but I, 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 you know. I think we'd be happy to give you another month to come up, try to come up with that if you want to.
I would say if you, if they table this and you still wanna potentially pursue this, bring more financial information, I could still. Still look into contacting the planning board, seeing what. Specifically, if there's any other issues that might be with your building itself, other than the, the, uh, percentage of the floor area. Um, and then also try to see, you know, specifically, you know, how. What that real percentage is, maybe it is close to fifteen percent.
I mean, if I could measure the space I work out of, like the chair and the sinks, they have my, like, clients don't go to the. They use the bathroom, but I also use that bathroom. People are not there, so there's.
You know, he's considered the bathroom as residential space, if it's connected to the residential part of the building as well.
I mean, it's all connected. The, it's not, it hasn't, everything.
So that doesn't, yeah, even though some people consider doing business, um, it's not considered part of your business. That, and that doesn't mean you can't allow people to, when you have a home occupation, to allow people to use their personal bathroom.
Yeah.
There's no regulation there. You're saying that's another one of those ways where you can consider that space legally as residential space. If it's connected, it's not, you know.
I mean, in that respect, you probably would be closer to fifteen percent in that regard.
Yeah, I, I think that there's probably a path forward for you there, um, I, 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 you know, you're gonna have to look at it. Obviously, a, a little bit more detail, but I, 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 I think there's an argument to be made there and that's probably gonna be your best, just the easiest way. A a little bit more detail, but I I I I think there's an argument to be made there and that's probably gonna be your fastest and easiest way. Um, that being said, if you if you do wanna try to come up with something, you know, we're we're happy to push this out to to next month, um. Uh, we could rule on it now if you want, um, you know, uh, based on a discussion, uh. You know, I've got some feelings on what we're gonna end up having to say, but um, uh. The, you could also withdraw your application, which gives you an opportunity to reapply at a later date if you wanted to, um. So, uh.
I'm a little lost on how to move forward here, I'll be honest. I mean, like, I'm not. I the financial hardship, I guess, is. Are you following mom with?
What they're saying right now is. They don't have enough to, like, right now, if they're gonna decide your application, you haven't. Um, really have nothing to lose to allow them to table it and pursue these other things and maybe. You know, come back, but you would have to show that each and every other allowable use cannot, uh. You're not able to make a, uh. You know, it's not. Yeah, reasonable return. Um, not just that this is gonna be the good financial move for you and your mother, but that the property you're not able to.
Well, I can't write out the residential portion I use that, like the whole, like I I have to make.
Good. See, that's that's a problem, right? If you uh, if you Google, um, like near state guide to applications for a Z B A. Um, their department of state has a guidebook that can like, will help you with some of that uh information and. The downside to it is that it's not. What you wanna do, but what you could do, right? So like, think about, you you have to look at it as, um, uh. Like, I'm a real estate tycoon that wants to make the most that I possibly could off of this piece of property and I wanna win monopoly. How can I do that? And you gotta show us that there's no other way other than what you wanna do, that you could win monopoly with this property.
Okay, yeah. So that, I I think, yeah, I now, there's probably not a way to convince under those guidelines. Here, and I mean, I would continue it just for the sake of tabling it, but I can't. I can't really think of any. Hardship that would fall, that would make sense for what you guys are looking for. I just feel like I'm in a rock and a hard place. I was thinking the code. Was supposed to allow for this and it's almost like it's not.
And you know, conceptually, it is supposed to allow for this. And if we table this and you're able to go to the planning board and get um your building type changed, you could. Withdraw the application, but if we vote now, like, has been said, it's not gonna go away.
I want.
Yeah, I guess. Um, and if you withdraw your application and then wanna reapply, then you would have to pay that fee again, so.
Table it allows you to pursue other.
Yeah.
Items and come back with the stronger application.
Or you don't have to see us.
I mean, there's no harm in just tabling it, um.
Yeah.
If you guys can think of any other way, given what's happening now.
Yeah.
Email address on the application. I would really appreciate it.
Yeah, um.
So do you, you need a motion to table this?
Yeah, I'll I'll get a motion to table this.
I'll make a motion to table that.
And Carl said, yeah, oh, call, call in a second.
And just for the record, you you did close uh public.
Oh, uh, let's make a motion. Well, should we leave it open? Because she's gonna wanna resubmit more information and if we close it, she can't do that.
Well, as an applicant, she can always provide additional, but the public hearing, the public wouldn't be able to provide any additional. You can always, you can always accept additional information from an applicant, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm I'm.
Yeah, it really does.
I'm not, I'm not worried about other people sending in all, you know, if you forgot some neighbors that wanna send in a letter of support.
I already spoke to my neighbors. The church knows about it and everything.
Um, so anyway, if they, I'm told next month if they wanna send in something, um, we'll still, we'll listen to that still. We can leave the public hearing open um until next um as well, um. Uh, all right, all in favor? Thank you, uh, good luck with the planning board. Let us know and we will see you next month unless we hear that you don't wanna be here next month.
I mean. Tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
You all may not. Thank you. I'll put it down.
Oh, all right, moving on, um, seventeen nineteen Summer Street. Which.
Um, in speaking with the planning board. In the building market. You know, I would like to uh table this. Um, at least for next month, because uh I've been told the fastest way to get my garage built. Uh, is a lot line deletion.
Yeah.
Uh, I believe I've gotten all the, I mean.
I believe it's on this Monday for.
Oh, Monday, not Thursday.
I believe so.
Yes. So I'd like to table it till next month and. See if I can get a permit, true investment. If I can't, then I keep this on the table and. My options are open, right?
I mean, you do this. Uh, we can certainly get a motion to table. Second.
Who's making the motion to table?
And obviously knows that, uh.
And who's second?
Right. Oh, it's not of those stable. Oh, wait, somewhere. All right, all in favor that's not Carl?
I.
All right. Okay, um, I will have an emotion to adjourn, being that that's all we got.
The big motion to adjourn.
All right, Carl, back in now.
We've already saw with other uh things. And fully adjourned, uh, with the new application, you want to discuss that at all or the prospect of. Doing just one application with the both types of variances on it.
Oh, I guess you can discuss that briefly.
Or and one of the things that I'm suggesting too is that we have. A application for appeals from determinations. As well as requests for interpretation, so they can, and it's just a very short one page, and basically. Here's a determination that they're appealing from, oh, what body, which are ninety-nine percent. You know, the zoning enforcement officer, but if that's, you guys know, also like H L.
Yeah, yeah.
In that nature. Um, and then uh interpretations to second later, people can also request. Yeah, before some determination.
So are you, you guys know what he's talking about? So, uh, there. Did everybody get uh the draft of those applications or was that just?
Yeah, why don't I just send those then out to that today?
Dispersed in Athens or Casey?
Well, mine just deleted a lot of stuff, so. Mostly, oh, yeah.
There were a couple of the things we wanted to add as well.
Yeah.
It's like a secondary sheet.
Well, then both, if the upstairs isn't young, they would have a.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Something going around, he's okay.
Yeah, yeah, okay, um. Yeah, the one thing, so we're discussing the applications here, right? Because um, one of the, you know, we're still kind of working off of this. I don't know how old this application is, but I mean, at least, at least it's relatively straight on the copy now. It used to be like this. And, um, and, uh, you know, it doesn't really work for us very well, so, um, uh, Casey and Amy and Matt have been working on. Um, uh, some new applications and, um, and I submitted some like drafts to that, but one of the things we're talking about is. Different types of applications, like, you know, for like, like, just whether or not they'd be separate between use and area variances, um. Which I think it makes sense to do it that way, mostly because.
Because I filled out one application in whichever one would meet my my needs. I figured that's what I was gonna go with, but. It, I mean, it didn't work out for me, but.
Yeah, I mean. One of the, um, one of the challenges, I think, is with. Know that it's it's, well, yeah, because it's right, it's it's, um. Uh, the the, they they need a variance because they're challenging the determination or. You know, or saying why that needs to be like, it should be a lap, right? It's like. I guess, how do we, how do they know, right? Um, uh. I mean, so like. If we were to have separate things. Well, somebody requested that from you, would you just tell them if it was a user area, like?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, when you're denied, you told me what what.
Yeah, where in the code is, where the code is, yeah.
Um, but it doesn't say.
It doesn't, it's always. Yeah, that's 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 the thing that I've been, you know, is is it? Somebody who doesn't know, doesn't know that that's because they're not allowed to use it this this way or because they.
I was just thinking if you were building it too close to the lot line. Because you didn't have enough area.
That that it would be, you know, the thing is right now, most area variances are taken care of by planning, right? You know, so, um, and you know, they're just considered waivers instead. So, um, uh, so we rarely see that and that's why it's just like, it seems like on the application, there's like all the stuff about it that no one is filling out or they are filling out. And it doesn't matter, you know, so, yeah, you know, so I feel like simplifying it, I feel like it it would be easier, um. Uh, but, uh, yeah, so I guess let's just circulate. Um, the the, you know, the um application to everybody and we can just chat about it a little bit next month. Um, and maybe put that on the agenda to chat about it next month. And, uh, yeah. All right, so, uh, back to motion to adjourn. Or who who was that? Carl, two seconds.
Yeah, yeah, great.
All right, all in favor?
All right, all right, let's go.
Thanks, everybody, for reviewing like.